I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I liked that. I think that was the most robust pledge of allegiance we've experienced since I've been in this seat. So, thank you all for that. We've now come to the portion of this evening's meeting, citizens' comments, where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Please direct your comments to the chair. Please refrain from cheering, booing, clapping, or speaking out of turn. And when you come to comment face this way, so that the camera can pick you up. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence, and enjoy your three minutes of comment.
Joshua Hunter Berkley. Thank you, Mayor Dean. My remarks are regarding the adopted budget and the lack of savings recognized from the leaf and chipper service cuts in the budget. On April 21st, the city manager provided council a draft budget. The city manager stated in the memo, however, this draft budget reflects only the revenues and resources known to use as of April 21st, 2023. This, of course, was before the Milage election. On May 5th, after the election, the city manager sent council another budget memo of various cuts in capital deferrals. In this list, the city manager estimated $150,000 of savings from a reduced leaf pickup schedule, and over $50,000 of savings from eliminating the chipper service. However, none of these savings are reflected in the budget that was adopted on May 16th. At the May 16th budget hearing, I asked which service cuts were reflected in the budget. I did not hear any answers to that question, so I analyzed the budget myself to compare the savings in the adopted budget with the April 21st budget. If you compare the expenditures in the April 21st fund summary with the adopted budget fund summary, you will see there's, you'll see there were $504,904 of reduced expenditures in the adopted budget. Of this $505,000, I found $163,000 reporting errors in the April 21st draft budget, which inflated the expenditures. Of the remaining $342,000 were additional capital deferrals, service cuts, cut events, and various other cost savings. But none of the line items are related to the leaf and chipper services. I sent council these details by account number and dollar amount, which can be reconciled to the $505,000 difference with the April 21st expenditures. I'm providing the details here again to be entered in the record for this meeting tonight. I also asked at the budget hearing if the general fund balance met the 25% of expenditures requirement. I did not hear this question answered, but I can only assume it meets the funding policy. So, my question, Mayor, is given the fact the services are fully funded in the adopted budget, and that the 25% requirement is met, why is the city manager cutting these particular services this year? And if additional savings are needed, why was the city manager's initial savings estimate not included in the budget? Thank you, Mayor, for your attention. I look forward to the follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
Hi. My name's Elizabeth Richards. This is my son, William. We have lived at Berkeley Residence for the last 10 years. I can't remember the list of things. I didn't have enough time to write down everything. And I actually don't know what your pronouns are, Ms. Mayor.
She/her/hers?
She/her/hers. Mine as well. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. I do appreciate the time that you have given me today. And I actually have been speaking on the Facebook forum with Joshua, and also want to address this same issue. So, I would like to know what answers we have for the proposed and the tree-cut service, and also the lawn bag service. We've had bag tags before. It didn't work for a lot of my fellow neighbors. You know, we've talked about it. That's what we do on our block. We talk about the issues that we're having. And I wanted to come here today to present my block, and the people that are my neighbors, direct neighbors, and the passion that I have for this particular, I guess you'd call it an event. It seems like it. So, I'd like to get some answers and some clarification as to why this is being cut. I also talked to several people, and have collected data about the people that have voted, did vote in this last election, this special election, and asked them if it was accessible to them, as well as other questions like, "Do you want to pay for bag tags?" "Would you like the chipper service?" And it's a mixed emotions, right? Like everything. So, I'd appreciate what your opinion, and what the thoughts are for everyone here. That's it. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, can I, I have one more question.
Sure.
I think I only have like 1:18. So, I got my time back? Can I reclaim my time, Ms. Mayor?
Ask your question.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. There is a position open, right, for the Director of Communication for the City of Berkeley, under the city manager, correct? Has that been filled? Are there any applicants? What kind of, I guess, what kind of recruiting have we done? There is a lack of communication. We know this. That's why the position is open. What are, what are, what are we doing to fill that? Is there anybody, has anybody, I don't know, talked to a recruiter, a recruiting company? It's really, sorry?
No, you're fine. It's, yes, is the short answer. Typically, council doesn't respond to questions and public comments.
Sure.
We have the city manager right here. If you would like to do a brief update.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I say, we are slated, I want to schedule some time to sit down with you, like we talked about in the email.
Perfect.
But yes, we actually, we had a really impressive slate of candidates. Our applicants come in.
Okay.
We did four interviews. We're close to making an offer to a preferred candidate.
Okay, okay.
Probably by the end of, the end of tomorrow. I think we set an internal deadline to try to get a-
End of tomorrow, okay. And then, when will we get an update on that, as to when it's been actually filled, the person has accepted the position?
Sure. So, I look forward to doing an introduction to that role at the next appropriate council meeting.
Okay. All right, great. Thanks.
Also, do you sign up for city emails? Do you get those?
Yeah.
And follow the city's Facebook page?
All of it.
And typically, that's out there. But to your point, yes, we are looking for-
It is a little kind of crazy.
Well, because we don't have a communication director right now, so.
That's why I do appreciate this position. I know that it's needed. There is a lot of disconjoined opinions.
Yep, we're getting it done.
Great, thanks.
Right, not rushed. Anyone else? Public comments. Ms. Mitchell, have you received any communication to be entered into the record this evening?
Yes, I have, Madam Mayor. Carla Osborne Berkley would like to know where the city is at with the ban of retail sales of dogs and cats. She said it has been six months without anything in place. She provided, for the record, a copy of an ordinance passed by Woodhaven that bans such sales.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I'm closing public comments. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 39th regular city council meeting on Monday, May 15th, 2023, and special city council meetings on Monday, May 8th, Tuesday, May 9th, and Wednesday, May 10th, 2023. Two, proclamation number P 2023, matter proclaiming June 19th, 2023, to be Juneteenth Celebration Day. Three, proclamation number P 2123, matter proclaiming the week of June 18th through 24th, 2023, to be Lightning Safety Week.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani, with support from Councilmember Baker. Any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognitions, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I've asked Councilmember Vilani to read proclamation number P 2023.
A proclamation of the City Council of Berkeley, Michigan, declaring June 19th, 2023, to be Juneteenth Celebration Day. Whereas, Juneteenth is a holiday marking the end of slavery in the United States, and whereas, the state of Michigan began recognizing Juneteenth as an official state holiday in June 2005 with the passage of PA 48 of 2005, and whereas, millions of African-Americans were captured and brought to this country as slaves in the inhumane conditions of slave ships that sailed across the Atlantic Ocean. And whereas, while approximately 11.5 million African-Americans survived the inhumane conditions, it is acknowledged that many millions of African-Americans did not survive the passage. And whereas, it is recognized that slavery then existed in this country for more than 200 years until the United States Congress passed the 13th Amendment of the Constitution, abolishing slavery throughout the country on January 31st, 1865. And whereas, Union Army General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, several months after the passage of the amendment, and one of his first actions was to read General Order Number Three, which stated that all slaves are free, and that former masters and slaves have absolute equality of personal and property rights. And whereas, following General Granger's reading of General Order Number Three, celebrations erupted as slaves learned of their freedom, and subsequently, June 19th, Juneteenth, became the emancipation date for those long-suffering for freedom. And whereas, since then, Juneteenth has been known as the oldest celebration commemorating the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas, this tradition of celebration has remained strong in recognizing the great triumph against the cruelty of slavery, and honoring and respecting the strength, endurance, and immense resilience of all African-American ancestors who endured the shackles of slavery, and those who persevered to see its end. And whereas, citizens must join together to acknowledge the history of slavery and the oppression which followed its ending, and to further carry forward the ideals of equality and democracy for all, regardless of a person's racial identity. Now, therefore, the council of the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims, Section One, that June 19th, 2023, is hereby declared as Juneteenth Celebration Day in the City of Berkeley. Section Two, the City of Berkeley calls upon the community to pause and reflect on this nation's history of, on this nation's history of slavery and oppression, to celebrate the progress made thus far in ending slavery, and the equal rights milestones that have followed, and to acknowledge the more progress must be made to ensure those Americans of African descent are truly free and equal as we move forward towards a brighter future. Proclaimed this fifth day of June 2023 at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council, signed by Mayor Bridgette Dean.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Oaths of Office, matter of administering oaths of office to appoint Public Safety Sergeant Daniel Shuey, Public Safety Officer Emily Larson, Public Safety Officer Liam Saris, Public Safety Officer Owen Foster, Public Safety Officer Justin Dulong, and Public Safety Officer Frederick Bismack.
Madam Clerk, will you please administer the oaths of office?
We will start with Sergeant Shuey.
Yes.
I'll have you raise your right hand. I, Daniel Shuey.
I, Daniel Shuey.
Having been duly appointed.
Have been duly appointed.
As Public Safety Sergeant.
As Public Safety Sergeant.
For the City of Berkeley.
For the City of Berkeley.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
And that I'll perform the duties of my office.
And I'll perform the duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we have Officer Larson. I'll have you raise your right hand. I, Emily Larson.
I, Emily Larson.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
As Public Safety Officer.
As Public Safety Officer.
For the City of Berkeley.
For the City of Berkeley.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
And that I'll perform the duties of my office.
I'll perform the duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Officer Saris. I, Liam Saris.
I, Liam Saris.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
As Public Safety Officer.
As Public Safety Officer.
For the City of Berkeley.
For the City of Berkeley.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
And I'll perform the duties of my office.
And I'll perform the duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Officer Foster. I'll have you raise your right hand. I, Owen Foster.
I, Owen Foster.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
As Public Safety Officer.
As Public Safety Officer.
For the City of Berkeley.
For the City of Berkeley.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
And that I'll perform the duties of my office.
That I'll perform the duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Officer Dulong. I'll have you raise your right hand. I, Justin Dulong.
I, Justin Dulong.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
As Public Safety Officer.
As Public Safety Officer.
For the City of Berkeley.
For the City of Berkeley.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do, do hereby solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
And that I'll perform the duties of my office.
That I'll perform the duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And how did you know? I'll have you raise your right hand. I, Frederick Bismack.
I, Frederick Bismack.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
As Public Safety Officer.
As Public Safety Officer.
For the City of Berkeley.
For the City of Berkeley.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
And that I'll perform the duties of my office.
And that I will perform the duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
So, before you all come up and allow us to shake your hand, I just want to thank you all for choosing Berkeley. It's not only a great community, but as I look around and I see all the support that you have in the room and in the hallway, it's truly a family atmosphere, and all that that implies. But we're happy to have you here. Congratulations to all of you. I look forward to seeing you out and about. And please come up and let us shake your hands. It's a really important day. Thank you. Chief, do you want to come up and say a few words?
Good evening. Just real briefly, I just wanted to say, first of all, how happy we are to have this great group, and then Sergeant Shuey also. Some of them have been in here for several months. Some of them have been here a couple of months. And we have a really nice mix. We have retired command officers, mother public safety officers, experienced public safety officers, three that just got out of the police academy on Thursday, two that can't legally go into a bar, I don't think, right? I don't think they buy their own ammunition either, right? Does your mom buy it for you? They have to have their mom Emily buy it for them? But I just want, on a serious note, rare serious note, the oath of office, I'd like you guys to all, maybe not tonight, but in the next couple of days, read that again. You know, everybody's nervous up here, but I take that very seriously, and I think our profession takes it very seriously. So, just read it again, because we're all about doing what's right. And I think, I think we really need to get back to why we're doing this job. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Mitchell, read item number three on tonight's regular agenda, please.
Presentation, matter of receiving a presentation by Annika Norris of Main Street, Oakland County, on downtown Berkeley receiving national reaccreditation from Main Street America.
Is there a motion? Oh, no, we don't have to do that. I'm sorry. Yeah.
I thought everybody was here for you.
That's a hard act to follow, right?
We know how to clear a roof.
How awesome is that, though? All right. Well, my name is Annika Norris. I'm the liaison that works with you from the Oakland County Coordinating Program for the Main Street program. Tonight, I'm here to congratulate Berkeley. The Berkeley DDA on meeting the performance standards required to receive the 2023 National Accreditation from Main Street, National Main Street and Main Street Oakland County. This is the fourth year that they've received the accreditation. The program's been in existence for five years, but the first year, they're learning how to do the accreditation and get to the accreditation process. And then, just a little bit about the accreditation. This annual accreditation recognizes exceptional management and commitment to the economic vitality, design, preservation, and preservation of historic downtowns and commercial districts. This is Main Street America's top level of recognition. This is an elite designation and signifies a strong commitment to preservation-based economic development and community revitalization through the effective application of the Main Street approach. Statewide, countywide, and citywide coordinating programs evaluate, select, and recommend qualifying communities to Main Street America on an annual basis. And for us, we bring in an outside person, typically from another coordinating program, from a different state or city coordinating program, to come with us to evaluate the Main Street program. And so, it's unbiased approach, I guess, and getting to see it from the outside. And Berkeley does very well, and has done very well for the last four years. I love working with this community. It's a lot of fun, and it's great to see all the good work that they do. And then, just a little bit more here. Evaluation criteria identifies communities that are building meaningful and sustainable revitalization programs, and includes standards such as fostering strong public-private partnerships, supporting small and locally-owned businesses, and actively preserving historic places, spaces, and cultural assets. With all of that, I'm happy to present to you and your board your accreditation program certificate.
Thank you very much.
Good evening to this honorable body. I'm Mike McGinnis, Executive Director of our Berkeley Downtown Development Authority. We accept this on behalf of the good people of Berkeley, Michigan, the many volunteers that make our work possible, so many of them forged and originated from Berkeley residents, the hundreds of small businesses that are located in our really unique and dynamic downtown, and the Board of Directors for the Downtown Development Authority for the volunteer work they do to serve, to move the organization forward. It's an honor to be able to collaborate with Oakland County. We are, we have the rare opportunity across the country to have a county coordinating council. That is not common. And so, for us to be able to have that direct service really benefits Berkeley's businesses in terms of funding opportunities, professional development, peer-to-peer collaboration. It's made a lot of the initiatives of the last few years that much stronger to benefit downtown Berkeley. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And do you usually want a photo?
If you, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, yeah. We'll do a little photo. We'll come around.
Okay.
Last year, we stood. You hold the power. You hold the gavel.
If I may say just one more thing, it is extremely important for, with the support of the council and city staff, to make a Main Street program successful. It is a grassroots organization that's, you know, extremely, volunteers are an extremely important part, but without your support, it wouldn't matter. They wouldn't be able to get done all the great things that they do. So, thank you for your support of their program as well.
Thank you. I was going to speak for all of council, and I still will, but if Councilmember Baker would like to say anything, as a liaison to the DDA for a long time, I know you've been really involved with this process, and, you know, being part of it and all of that. So, I give you the floor.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And it is with an awe and admiration that I'm grateful that this was put on the agenda for this evening. This is a tremendous amount of work. Having been liaison to the DDA for a little while now, it's been remarkable to see the progress that's been made, both within the city and across the relationships within the community and beyond into the county. So, I'm exceptionally happy to see this tonight, and for us to have such recognition. And if either or both of you would like to share a little bit more about either the process by which interviews are conducted to ensure that this isn't just some kind of a paper exercise, but it's actually, you know, testimonial-based, as well as evidence-based accreditation, could you share a little bit more insight into the process?
Sure, sure.
So, folks know this isn't just a box that gets checked?
Yes. Thank you for the time. I always try to keep it super short, but I guess sometimes it leaves things out to end people won't understand. So, the accreditation process was our team at Main Street Oakland County, the, oh, shoot. Oh, I cannot remember his name at the moment, from down south. Ray, yes, Schreiber, from New Orleans area.
Nice.
And then, it also, it can be a day-long. I think we did a half-day process where we brought in business owners and interviewed the business owners to see how their relationship was with the DDA. We also then brought in some different residents and volunteers to make sure everyone understood what the Main Street program was, and had a clear direction and definition of what it is that they do. Because basically, we look at the four points. We look at the design. So, if you have a hard time remembering the four points, you can just think of me and think dope. So, design, organization, promotions, sorry, and economic vitality. So, within everything that the Main Street does, we like to look at all of those four points. We don't have to silo them, but everything they do, kind of making sure that they're following their mission and vision through those four points. So, we brought in the volunteers. We brought in the business owners. We looked at what promotions were going on. How do you- at what, what promotions were going on, how, how do you get the word out, not only about the Main Street program and the DDA, but events that happen in the downtown, are those following the four points as well? And then we look at the overall organization. How is it working? How are they communicating with council? How are they communicating with the city and staff? Are they taking advantage of all the things that we offer at Oakland County? Are they using the grant programs, education programs? We also look at the director to make sure that everyone feels like he's doing what is expected of him, right? Is he getting the education that he needs? Is he attending the, the managers' meetings that we provide bimonthly? Is he attending the educational events that we provide? And then going to the Main Street Conference, which we pay for. And we pay for a little bit of the flight and travel, not a lot, but we do our best. And just things like that. And so it's kind of the overall program, how smooth is it running? How is everybody communicating? And what kind of things are you getting done? And I have to say, I've been working with Berkeley now since 2018, the very end of 2018, I should say, so more 2019. But, so from your first accreditation forward, and it's been great to see all the really cool things that the program has done. And then, you know, there were a lot of good things that came before Mike, and I think Mike was able to, to kind of take all of those things that were built up and kind of run even, even further with them. We like to talk about incrementalism, because we don't want to change everything overnight. And I don't think everything's been changed overnight. It's been a nice, slow pace, but it's, it's been a little bit faster. And that's been really cool to see how exciting the number of volunteers. Whenever I see stuff on Facebook, people are so proud and excited of the events that are provided and, and just the overall support that they get. So it, it's, it's clear, but using that outside perspective, I think, make sure that, that I don't miss anything, because I might, I, I might be a little more protective, right? And so someone else could come in and say, well, maybe you should kind of work on this. So we do give some goals. They get a report at the end to see maybe kind of areas to strengthen, to provide strengthening on. And we've been looking at some stuff like that. And, but everything's really good, and we just want to keep moving them forward and provide any educational tools to help elevate the program. Thank you.
Well, thank you again for that, that recap of not only the process, but again, listing some of the benefits that we gained from this. And this, again, is to the credit of you and the organization, to our, to our director, and to the, our board members, and all the amazing members that helped make the DDA thrive, all the volunteers that helped make all these events happen. And I'm, again, very grateful for this evening's presentation to help, to, again, demonstrate to our business owners and to our community the fantastic downtown that we have and the tremendous roadmap ahead that we have for us. So, so thank you again for being here tonight.
Thank you. I would just like to say, I remember my time, Mayor Protem Gavin and I served on the Executive Board of the DDA. And I, and I, as a former business owner, I remember the beginnings of this whole process and just watching things happening and, and seeing the growth of it. And the thing that I, that I see when I'm walking into downtown is that preservation-based growth. I mean, I look at the incredible buildings we have in this community, and when a business comes in and they just make what's there better, you know, we're not going to, let's, let's preserve this building. And what can we do to, to bring it into the now, but with a nod to its history and, and its, you know, the spirit of it and, and maybe what it was before. And so all of those things matter. It, it helps keep our downtown vibrant. And we all know that where downtowns are vibrant, neighborhoods flourish. And so it all, it goes, it comes full circle and feeds on itself in a really good way. So thank you so much for being here. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you, Mr. McGinnis, for being so diligent and working so hard to keep moving the needle and making us better. You guys are a great combo. Again, echoing Council Member Baker's points, the deep gratitude for all the volunteers, without whom a lot of this wouldn't happen. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number four on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M-3623, matter of approving the mayor and city manager to enter in an intergovernmental agreement for animal control services between the City of Berkeley and the City of Royal Oak. The City of Berkeley will provide animal control services for the City of Royal Oak for $53,429.19 for the first year with annual increase of 3% a year. This intergovernmental agreement shall be for a term of five years, beginning on the first day of July 2023 and ending on the 30th day of June 2028.
Is there a motion to approve M-3623?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Council Member Patterson with support from Mayor Protem Gavin. Mr. Baumgarten?
Not much to share, other than what Chief Kane's going to be sharing with you, but this is in a renewal of relationship that has worked well for a number of years. And the recommendation is to please consider approval.
Thank you. Chief, what would you like to tell us?
I'd like to tell you that we currently are in agreement with the City Pleasant Ridge, and it's worked out great for both of us. I think we're both low-maintenance departments. We, we do things right, and we've had very little problems, and it's not an excessive burden at all on us to, to house our prisoners, perform animal control, them use our range, and for dispatch. So it's, it's very mutually beneficial for both, and we're both very happy. Pleasant Ridge is very happy. We're really happy with our interactions. So we recommend renewing it.
Thank you. Any comments from the public on this item? Comments or questions from council?
I just had one, this was for the animal control between Royal Oak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think you jumped ahead to item.
You're living in the future, chief.
Okay, remember what I just said.
Very forward-thinking.
That, but Royal Oak.
That.
It's all right.
Okay, let me get to that one.
Chief, off the top of your head, what do you think about the intergovernmental agreement for animal control services with Royal Oak?
So I don't know how, I don't know how to skip that. Okay, animal control, Royal Oak. Basically the same thing. They've been a great partner. Don't believe what you see on Facebook. We really get along very well. And matter of fact, they gave Kevin a work station at their new station. He doesn't have one here, so that's, that's nice of them. So.
He's basically in Royal Oak now.
They did a lot of business in Royal Oak, but he's also in Pleasant Ridge, in Huntington Woods, in Berkeley. And a bonus for us is he's also a firefighter, so we can count on him, both while he's here and for callbacks, too. So that helps us out a lot. So we really think, we think the dollar amount is fair and the increase is fair for the amount of work that he does in Royal Oak.
I like the dollar amount, because it seems very specific. And I like it.
Yes. And basically, we took the same, exact same contract. We just kept going for five more years.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know how I did that. I apologize.
It's all right. Questions or comments from council, now that we're all on the same page? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M-3623?
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-3723, matter of approving the mayor and city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement for lockup services, animal control services, use of the Berkeley DPS range, and dispatch services between the City of Berkeley and the City of Pleasant Ridge for a $6,500 fixed yearly fee for each full-time equivalent reflected in the Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards. Fall semi-annual law enforcement distribution report for Pleasant Ridge Police Department. This agreement shall be effective for a term commencing July 1st, 2023, and continuing until June 30th, 2026.
Is there a motion to approve M-3723?
So moved.
Motion made by Council Member Vilani with support from Council Member Baker. Mr. Baumgarten? Okay.
Can you read back what I said before? I want me to repeat anything? Good agreement for both of us, slow maintenance.
Okay.
Everything's great.
Public comment. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M-3723?
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Motion number M-3723 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-3823, matter of approving the County Oakland Irish Fest event, 5:00 PM to midnight, Friday, September 8th, 2023, on Robina Avenue, and 11:00 AM to midnight, Saturday, September 9th, 2023, on 12 Mile Road from Buckingham to Wakefield. The event is hosted by the County Oakland Irish Fest, 3074 12 Mile Road, Berkeley, Michigan, 48072. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event dates.
Is there a motion to approve M-3823?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin?
Support.
With support from Council Member Henan. Mr. Baumgarten?
I think, Madam Mayor, this is an event that has been with us for a couple of years now. It has been featured along 12 Mile since its inception several years ago. It did take some time away during the COVID pandemic, but has returned now. And it's been reviewed by the Public Safety Office, the Public Works Department, and all other appropriate departments. The recommendation is that they approve it in review of our normal process of things. We do feel the committee can provide the volunteers and the safety protocols needed to keep attendees safe during the, the use of the city's right-of-way. We did have, since we're on the, been talking a lot about budgets, we did review what some of the costs would be to the city in, in applying for this. And we will be looking for some fee recovery, cost recovery from the organizers as well, so that the city is not truly sponsoring this as an in-kind partner, not that it has to do so, but there is quite a bit of time that goes into this from a public work standpoint and a public safety standpoint. Again, making sure that everyone who visits Berkeley for this or any other events is impressed by our community, has a good time in our community, and feels safe by our community.
Thank you. Mr. Blanchard, do you want to add anything?
I just want to say that.
We have Peggy here from the committee who can also answer questions.
Yes, I see Peggy Spilker here.
I'd just like to say that it's been going good for years. We've got a schedule working now. The, the plan is being developed, it's not done yet, but we should have no problems. It's a very safe event.
Thank you. Emergency Manager Blanchard. Peggy Spilker, let's hear from you. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. I appreciate the City of Berkeley working with us on this. It's been pretty fun every year that we've managed to do it. I sometimes don't have very much fun at it, but we, we, we think we have a little bit of better arrangement than we did last year, so we're real happy about that. And I've got a few extra people working with us, so I think it should be another fun event.
Okay. I'm just going to, are there any public comments? Sure. You have to come to the microphone.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, Peggy, yeah, I just need to share now, because she'll, she will be answering, I'm thinking.
Okay, perfect. So during the Berkeley Days event that just happened this past year, we had a flood of people through my neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhoods, because it was evacuated pretty rapidly. Everyone was asked to leave, right? That's, it was closed. And what, there was no emergency route. Is there going to be an emergency route for if an evacuation needs to happen, where people are directed to go? Is that a plan?
Blanchard or Chief, either of you?
We do have traffic restrictions. Berkeley Days was completely different, because most of the people there were dropped off and they had nowhere to go.
Sure.
So we just had to get them out of that area and keep pushing them away. This, this one, it's a, it's a different type of event. We will still have people working it, but we do have evacuation plans.
Thank you.
Is that public knowledge?
No.
Is there, okay. Okay. I'm just curious, because.
Yeah, that's security. We don't get away.
Sure, sure. I understand. As, as a resident who is affected by that, I just hesitate to attend events, again. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, come to the microphone.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say that.
Excuse me. Please state your name and city of residence.
Oh, yeah, sorry. This is my first time.
It's okay. Just a reminder.
Yeah, Jacob Zundell, Berkeley.
Okay.
And all I wanted to say really was, I think the idea of the County Oakland Irish Fest is a great idea, and I'm sure I'll go to it, too. But I just thought I could make a referral, maybe, because I'm not sure if I saw this on a website. But if you guys could hand out pamphlets or something to say, like, some historical events, contributions they made, I think that'd really help with getting people to want to, like, explore those things more in Irish history, and also get them to look at other countries, too, and see what contributions they made. And I just, like, wrote a few examples, just for historical stuff that might be cool to put in such a pamphlet, like how Irish monks during medieval ages, they went all across Europe, and they taught many things, like how to write. They also taught metallurgy. And they even worked for kings across the courts. Charlemagne is one people know by name a lot. Well, if you want more modern examples, you can even talk about people like Jonathan Swift, Oscar Wilde, Ernest Walton, who is a Nobel Prize winner. And I could say many things, too, but I don't want to take up all your guys' time. And I'm not sure how much that would cost for your budget, but I just think it's a cool idea for your festival. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGinnis?
Hi. Good evening to this honorable body. Mike McGinnis, Executive Director of the Berkeley DDA. Just want to thank Ms. Spilker and the entire crew for choosing downtown Berkeley, because you could be really anywhere in the region, but you're very astute and wise and Irish, and you've chosen downtown Berkeley. We have a number of downtown retailers that fit in very nicely, obviously. Mr. Monahan with the Twisted Shamrock is an active part of the organizing and, and facilitating this function, but there are many others that can, we can leverage. So that way, it's, it's got reverberation and positive benefit for our downtown businesses. And we look forward to, on behalf of the downtown organization and other downtown businesses, helping accelerate and accentuate your success. And we have tried to come up with creative ways to make it thrive even more. And we're really grateful you've chosen downtown Berkeley to be the home and the operation base.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments or questions from council? Council Member Henan?
Yeah, this is actually a question for the city manager. There's some questions. With the new timesheet system that we have, and not just this event, are we in a better position to start tracking, you know, more precisely what our actual costs are for this event, for the art batch coming up this weekend, that sort of thing?
That's exactly correct, yes. We'll have much more finite numbers as we leave this budget year and start to consider next year's budget, to know truly what the impact of events like this are for our public works and our public safety departments.
Okay. Yeah, and I think something I'd like to see out of, you know, all of the events that we're going to have this upcoming calendar year are just a report back of what the actual costs were, and start considering what fees we should be charging for these events starting next calendar year, to try and recapture some of that. You know, I don't want to make it so burdensome that the events can't exist, but we're also in a position where we need to, you know, we can't fully subsidize the work we're giving away. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Certainly. We're, we're preparing a, for consideration, updates to the fee schedule now, that we believe will come before council at the June 19th meeting. That includes some language and the similar.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Spilker.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M-3823?
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Schlanta.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Motion number M-3823 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number seven on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-3923, matter of approving a downtown development authority event, downtown Berkeley Farmers Market on Robina, south of 12 Mile Road, on Thursdays from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, starting June 1st, 2023, through October 26, 2023. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to the event date.
Is there a motion to approve M-3923?
So moved, Your Honor.
Whoa.
We are all fighting for that.
Motion made by everyone with support from, I'm going to call it Baker and Patterson.
Support.
Mr. Baumgarten?
I think, Madam Mayor, the Berkeley Farmers Market has already started, but it's confined to the sidewalk and right-of-way areas on Robina. It's been a rousing success, and it's a very limited run here so far, such to the point that we'd like to expand into Robina, the road itself. And so the question that comes before council on these type of events are, can the event be held safely? Is there adequate volunteers and protections for those attendees? In this case, the DDA is the submitting body, and after reviewing In this case, the DDA is the submitting body, and after reviewing Farmers Market, their plan with public works as well as public safety, we would like to recommend approval for the use of the right-of-way to expand the Farmers Market. And Mr. McGinnis is still here.
Mr. McGinnis.
Well, good evening and thank you. The volunteers of the Downtown Development Authority are really enthused to be able to bring this offering to the community. It's no secret that you've probably heard from a lot of your neighbors or the, your inner conscience telling you, we would love to have a Farmers Market in Berkeley, and we concurred, but we really just didn't have the capacity with limited staff of WA and, but volunteers. And luckily, earlier this year, we were approached by two downtown Berkeley retailers, Janine Braun of the Artsy Umbrella and Nada Abate of Nada and Co. Their retail locations are very close to each other at the Twelve Mile and South Robina vicinity, and they were willing to help be the catalyst and be the volunteers to help drive the effort. They have a strong roster of local vendors and artisans and makers that would be able to populate our Farmers Market, and I'm really grateful to them, because if not for their willingness to go above and beyond and roll up their figurative sleeves, that this could be possible. So what we've proposed, we did an assessment of where were all the other Farmers Markets in our region, and in Oakland County alone, there are a lot. So we looked at, where are they, and then when are they? Because many of the vendors at any of the Farmers Markets in the region, they're hopscotching based on their availability and what works for them, where they've established their footprint. There are many of them that are held on Saturdays, from, of course, Royal Oak, where Mr. Dean, the First Gentleman of Berkeley, can be found most Saturday mornings, among many other Berkeley residents, but Rochester, many other communities, Birmingham has weekends Farmers Markets. We looked very intentionally, and we found this beautiful sweet spot on Thursdays where there was no conflict, where we weren't competing for prospective visitors, and we weren't competing in the mad dash to have vendors. So that's why, for this first year, this first iteration, it's where we've landed. We recognize that not everyone's available. We intentionally created a larger window from nine AM to three PM. We recognize that each individual's schedule is different, but that was the thought process, and as the year goes on, we'll assess, see what we're looking at. Maybe we went too many months, maybe we want to shift the hours. This is an experiment, but luckily, it's a low-risk, high-reward experiment. It's pretty cost-neutral, and when it comes to the cost to the municipality, we've worked very intentionally to be able to make it very turnkey and in-house. We recognize that once a week for, you know, multiple months, almost half the year, is no small feat. So we were working with the DPW leadership, where our volunteers can help support and reinforce the placing of the barricades and the reinforcing of where safety cones can go, so we can have it very turnkey, and it will not be especially onerous or burdensome on them. As the city manager spoke to, we did a soft launch last Thursday, and so it was very well-received. We had really just a sampling of the vendors. We'll have double the number of vendors. If this council decides in the affirmative to authorize the road closure, we'll be able to have over twenty vendors, and we expect to have a greatly increased attendance boost as well, because we're, we wanted to sort of hold back before we went full guns blazing in case we needed to make some shifts if public safety or public works wanted some last-minute tweaks. And also, if you say yea or nay, you hold the power, you are he-man for this Farmers Market, and we hope that you'll be supportive of it. This is something that's really about infusing foot traffic into the downtown. We heard from a lot of the retailers where this is sort of a slower time of the day, slower time of the week, and we intentionally assessed for the nearby businesses, this is something where it wouldn't be harsh competition for parking, for example, or sort of creating that clash of interests. We tried to maximize the win-win factor. And the beauty of this area of our downtown, and no surprise to you, it was chosen in part because those, that's where the volunteer businesses, that's where they're located. So that had a very heavy impact on where we chose, but it's got the beauty of, if in future years, as it continues to grow, and this is the most strategic place to have it in our downtown, with the city council's permission, that it may be able to be Robina North, Robina South, or it may extend into some alleys or right-aways. We've got some elbow room there to grow. So if you do approve it this evening, then I'll hustle my little downtown legs around for the residents in the vicinity. We had a lot of great interaction and sort of soft education, since it really was a lot of Griffith, Gardner, Robina folks walking up, a lot of families, parents with strollers, seniors. It was a really nice cross-section, and we know it's going to continue to grow as word gets out and the vendor pool expands, but I want to make sure that no one that lives on Robina especially is shocked that, for their Thursday commute. So the beauty is that it's pretty consistent, right? They'll know now through the end of October that that's the minor inconvenience, but for hopefully a really great quality-of-life boost. For those that are really looking for particular items or wares or produce, et cetera, we are expecting to have an expanded offering, and each week we'll have a different set of vendors, just because of their availability, but also the volunteer coordinators are working to curate and recruit as much as possible. And I've already begun interfacing with some of the other Farmers Markets managers and downtown directors in Oakland County and beyond, because there is no necessarily adversarial approach when we ain't on their date. So hopefully, there's plenty of cooperation that will continue and goodwill, that will continue to build. Everyone that comes to downtown Berkeley loves it, and so if you haven't been for a minute, or you're a resident and haven't, you know, been prompted or encouraged to explore what's new, we always have a new and vital adding to the downtown business landscape, and as we, as the DDA, working with the city and residents, to try and make some more enhancements, to make it even more dynamic, beautiful, and pleasant, walkable.
Thank you. I do want to clarify one thing, yes, you will see Mr. Dean at the Royal Oak Farmers Market, he'll be eating breakfast with his buddies. No fresh produce or flowers ever come home, unless I send a list. I don't know how you're surrounded by all of that, and nothing comes home, but that's beside the point. I'm very excited about this. For years, I've been hearing people, you know, can we, we should, what would it take? So thank you for running with us, and thank the businesses really for pushing. I mean, that's kind of how things get done, too. You have people that have a great idea, and they're willing to put the work in, and they know who to partner with to get it done, and here we are. So-
And it's worth pointing out, BerkeleyFarmersMarket.com, if you don't want to hunt the downtownberkeley.com website, that link will take you right to it. Ongoing opportunity, if you or somebody you know is, just want to consider vendoring opportunities, there's more room at the end.
Thank you. Any public comments on this agenda item?
Of course. I'd just like to say that it is now three minutes to eight on Monday night, the fifth, and this starts on the eighth, and you guys want a full-blown event plan?
You just happen to have one, don't you?
I happen to have one. I did it this afternoon, I finished it this afternoon, so, Mr. McGinnis? Don't lose it. I'll be checking on you. So we are trying to stay ahead of what's going on and make sure that everybody in this town is safe, and I know that Mike will do a good job with that, and we're just here to help him out.
Thank you, Jack, appreciate it. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Baker?
Yes, thank you. By the power of Grayskull, I must say that I remember perhaps either before both of your times, the DDA and Mr. Keith Ogston had done a lot of great work, trying to bring about this very event, and so I'm exceptionally thrilled to see us have a Farmers Market. I appreciate the framing of a first-year experiment to learn and grow. I imagine every subsequent episode will be that much better than the prior, and begin to establish a tremendous reputation for this event in particular, and to continue the accolades for our downtown. So very pleased to see this happen. I echo the sentiments of appreciation for the business owners that are jumping in and looking forward to continuing to support and enjoy what they have to offer, and, you know, if you need to make more shopping lists or something like that, then, you know, at least this one's a little bit closer.
Yes, there you go. Very true.
So thank you very much.
Sure. Councilmember Patterson?
Yeah, I just, thank you for bringing this to Berkeley. I am a small-time farmer, obviously not in Berkeley, more in the thumb area, and I have a lot of friends up there that would probably be interested. The website's very easy. The only question I had is if they want to print the document, would they email it to you, or how would they get that back?
We'll make whatever option and format that works for them, we're receptive to it.
And they would just call that phone number. Excellent, thank you. I'm excited to bring some of them down here.
Thank you for that, yes, so that you're, the Patterson family soybeans are welcome. I don't know if that's a hot-ticket item at Farmers Markets.
And hay, I don't know how many people are eating hay, but-
We'll sell it. I'm up for it, and especially in the fall, it'll be beautiful and staging, and it's intentionally, we're trying to take a very expansive view. It's about the community coming together, having fun, engaging and interacting and exploring their downtown. We do have live music every Farmers Market, at least from noon to three, and then as it grows, maybe even more, and that's at no cost, just some community members that are willing to perform, and we want more of that. So if you have a lightbulb moment, it's worth reaching out to see that experiment. That's obviously very direct, you know, produce sources, and we welcome that, and it's something that actually a lot of Farmers Markets struggle with in downtowns throughout the county. It's like, well, where's the farmers part of Farmers Markets? And we recognize that we might have those hurdles as well, but that would be a great boost to be able to help clear that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M. thirty-nine twenty-three.
Baker?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. M. thirty-nine twenty-three has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number eight on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M. forty-two-three, matter of considering a one-hundred-day, one-hundred-and-eighty-day extension of marijuana business license PMA twenty-dash-zero-zero-zero-three for Operation Grow LLC DBA Butter, two-two-two-two, West Eleven Mile Road.
Is there a motion to approve M. forty-two-three?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Henin. Mr. Baumgarten.
I think, Madam Mayor, Chris, Community Development Director Kapalansky worked closely on this with the Attorney's Office. So the, there is a one-year requirement in our ordinance that was built in so that businesses can be up and running at least a year after the approval, and that would give us the ability to check against the promised items that they gave, that they indicated in their application. But we also did allow for the option of requesting and receiving a one-hundred-and-eighty-day extension as well. And we're in a situation now where this and the next agenda, the request for the next agenda item are at that point, need to request that timeline, and neither one of them have been able to come into operation yet, thereby restricting us from doing a full review of their adherence to their application. So both the city, myself, the Community Development Director Kapalansky, and I believe the City Attorney's Office, put this place before you with the recommendation for approval, please.
So this six-month provision was built in, thinking that we may come to this moment?
Right, right, so we did in our ordinance build in the options for a couple of different requests for extensions. As you remember, there were a couple that had to exercise that during the application period, as well as the site plan approval period as well. So we were forward-thinking in that, and thankfully, our ordinance is largely held up against multiple challenges in litigation, so, yeah, so we're pretty proud of this.
Thank you. Mr. Christ, do you have anything to add?
No, Mayor, but I did see in the material, it appears the applicant seeking this additional extension has identified the progress that they've made towards opening it, and perhaps optimistically, but believe they may only need a thirty-day portion of the proposed six-month extension.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here from Butter that would like to weigh in on this, or give us some perspective?
Good evening, my name's Grant Jeffries, Five Eights Architecture, speaking on behalf of my client's Butter. I think you all saw in the letter, I kind of outlined what work has been completed at the time of the letter, which was about six weeks ago. Since then, we've gotten rough inspections and approvals on electrical, mechanical, and plumbing, and drywall has been hung and is being taped and muddied as we speak, so that the schedule that we attached to the letter is, we're still on track to finish on that mid-August date. Obviously, unforeseen issues can always come up. I'd be surprised if some didn't, but I don't think any issues that we would come across at this point would extend beyond that one-hundred-and-eighty days. The, kind of the biggest hang-up we've had is just getting the pre-construction meeting scheduled with the city so that we can begin the site work. We've been, all the work we've been doing so far has been focused on the building itself, which was quite an extensive renovation, and we have that meeting scheduled now for tomorrow afternoon, so once we get through that, we'll be able to kind of start on the exterior work, and, yeah, not foreseeing any issues, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Danny Amori up from Operation Grow, and I just, Grant pretty much said it all, but just wanted to kind of echo that everything's pretty much on schedule. We're slated to be like late August, mid to late August for construction to be done, and, yeah, everything's going pretty well, and we're moving along, so, thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Any public comments on this? Questions or comments from council? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. To the city manager, as part of our evaluation process, did this particular operation rank in the top three, or were they below the top three?
I believe they were the number-one applicant. They received a three-ten, I believe, out of three-fifteen, possible?
Thank you, and I'll ask that again next time, too.
Councilmember Vilani?
Well, I can say, I live right around the corner, and I drive by almost every day, and I can vouch that I am constantly amazed by how much progress is made on a day-to-day basis when I drive by, so it's very clear that they are trucking along and getting that building all fixed up, so.
Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, a question for the applicant, just, we're looking at a mid-August completion. Do you have a rough estimate of when you may be opening to the public?
Yeah, we're hoping, you know, like Grant mentioned, sometimes there can be delays, so we pegged it for a September twenty-first soft opening date, and then hoping to have a grand opening in October, which you're all invited to.
Okay, thank you.
Make a correction, Butter received three-fifteen out of three-fifteen, so they ran the gamut.
Thank you, Council, City Manager Baumgarten. Okay, anyone else? All right, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M. forty-two-three?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Motion number M. forty-two-three has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number nine on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M. forty-one twenty-three, matter of considering a one-hundred-and-eighty-day extension of marijuana business license PMA twenty-dash-zero-zero-one-zero for Attitude Wellness DBA Loom, one-nine-four-nine, Twelve Mile Road.
Is there a motion to approve M. forty-one twenty-three?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Henin. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A different applicant, but the premise of their request is the same, based on the same section of ordinance. This is another one of our vendors who were farther ahead than some of the other ones. They received an approval and a timeline such that they're now butting up against their one-year as well. This site is under construction, but has not yet been completed. This applicant received a three-oh-one out of a potential three-fifteen, and they were one of the three that were tied for that third tier. But again, they, this is the one that is farther along in the construction process and does believe they are about thirty days out, would not utilize the full one-eighty, but the wording in the ordinance is such that one-hundred-and-eighty days is the request that an applicant can make.
Thank you. Mr. Christ, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, Your Honor, except that as with the other applicant, they've identified the progress they've made towards completion, and suggests that they'll have their facility completed well in advance of the hundred-and-eighty days.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from Loom who would like to give us some perspective?
Yes, good evening, John Abbo here on behalf of Loom Cannabis. I think, you know, the city manager and the city attorney did a great job of explaining, you know, where we're at. We're substantial completion, very close. I think we've just recently been issued a temporary certificate of occupancy, so we're applying for our state inspections currently, so we hope that that will be completed fairly quickly. Matt Burberry, who's our construction manager here, he can give you further details as to where we are with respect to construction.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Matt Burberry, City of Royal Oak, Construction Facilities Manager for Loom. Currently, we're targeting the week of June nineteenth, have all the asphalt and brick pavers done on the west side lot, and then landscaping and law- done on the west side lot, and then landscaping and lawn irrigation will follow the following week. So, with our temp CVOs, John pointed out, we are currently trying to schedule our state inspections, all interior, including the state inspection for the elevator has been closed out. So, we're right at that finish line. So, the 180 days is excessive, but good insurance policy. We should be good by the end of June.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comments? Questions or comments from council? Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M-4123?
Gavin?
No.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Dean?
Yes. M-4123 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number 10 on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R-1523, matter of considering a resolution authorizing an application for the Protecting Michigan Pension Grant Program.
Is there a motion to approve R-1523?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Proton Gavin?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a new program that the state introduced with the adoption of the most recent fiscal budget at the state level. What this does is allows for local, qualified local units of government to apply, to bring their mortgage, or, sorry, their pension cost funding ratio up to 60%. City of Berkeley currently sits underneath that point, is about 53% funded. So, for us, this would mean about $592,000. So, it's a good amount of money. It is a good fiscal benefit to the city, and it actually wouldn't go to us at all if we were approved for it. It would actually go straight to MERS, who handles our pension program for us. This is specifically the funding for the defined benefit pension. And if you recall, we actually did end that benefit for new hires back in 2020. So, we're now into a different pension model for newer hires. So, these are some of our older leftover legacy costs. And so, we've taken the right steps. So, we've been under a continuing monitoring from the Treasury's municipal fiscal agency, and they've been happy with the steps. We're happy that they've rolled out this program. It really goes to show how many different municipalities across the state were in the same need here that the legislature decided to step in and allocate some funds to putting all of the Michigan municipalities that qualify into a healthier spot, which they define as a 60% funding ratio. So, for that reason, this comes before you as a process item. The grant program does require that the local governing board name somebody who is going to be applying for this, approve the application, and then make sure that they understand what the obligations to that municipality will be moving forward. And those are outlined in the memo that comes to you from PSLZ, our auditing firm. So, that's in there, as well as the resolution itself, which largely follows the template provided by the state.
Thank you. Public comment? Questions or comments from council? Okay. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on R-1523?
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. R-1523 has passed. Well, we're at our communications portion of the evening. Ms. Mitchell, who goes first?
Councilmember Patterson.
Awesome. Nice.
The Planning Commission did meet on the 23rd. They reviewed a preliminary sketch plan for a project for, on Coolidge. The next meeting will be June 27th here in Chambers. I just want to take a second to welcome all of our public safety officers that were sworn in tonight. Berkeley truly is a better place because of all of our public safety officers, so I do thank them for their willingness to serve all of us as residents. And congratulations again to our downtown Berkeley for the national re-accreditation for our Main Street of America. I know it's not an easy feat, and the volunteers that put that on do a lot, as well as Director McGinnis, so thank you.
Councilmember Henon?
Yes, so, from the Tree Board, all of the spring trees have been planted. If you received a tree, you know, this spring or even last year from the city, please water it, especially, it's very critical its first year, but especially as dry as it has been, you know, please take care of that. The Tree Board learned from the Department of Natural Resources that volunteer hours can often be used for matching portions of grants. You can't count meeting time, but you can count time preparing materials, sharing information, you know, sharing things on social media pages, or when you're out in the community doing work and talking to people. So, I'd like to encourage all of our boards to start tracking those volunteer hours to potentially help us to defray monetary costs of grants. And just for example, the Tree Board has calculated their volunteer hours and the amount of that value, and just from the last six or seven months, it's come to $10,000. So, it can add up pretty quickly. The Tree Boards is taking the summer off now, and their next meeting will be in September. Then, for the Zoning Board of Appeals, they will be having four cases, two-dimensional variances, assigned variance, and an interpretation, a little bit of everything that they do. So, they meet at 7:00 PM on June 12th, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Hey, that's me. Thank you. Happy June, everybody, and I'd also like to echo sentiments of appreciation and gratitude for our new public safety officers. What you do for our community is incredible. You serve us with integrity and professionalism, and so, thank you all for what you do in keeping our community safe and with a smile. Our Downtown Development Authority meets next week's Wednesday, June 14th. Hooray for the farmer's market, as mentioned earlier. That website is BerkeleyFarmersMarket.com. And for more information on our downtown in general, please visit DowntownBerkeley.com. Historical Committee meets the day prior, next week's Tuesday, June 13th. As you complete your spring cleaning for the season, please bring along any items related to Berkeley's history, photos, books, magazines, et cetera. You can bring them to the museum or to City Hall or even to the library, and they'll get delivered to the right folks who will know how to properly catalog and preserve those and share those with the rest of the public. The museum welcomes visitors Wednesdays from 10 until 1:00 and Sundays from 2:00 until 4:00. And please visit the museum at BerkeleyHistory.com. And finally, it was President Trump who said, "When all Americans are treated equal, no matter who they are or whom they love, we are more free." Oh, wait, no, sorry. That was President Obama. I'm sorry. And let me just add that diversity is what we have, inclusion is what we do, and belonging is how we feel. Here in Pride Month, our city motto is "We Care," and that must apply to everyone because together we are stronger. So, please hug somebody you love because you need to do that more than you probably know. Thank you.
Thank you. Proton?
Thank you, Your Honor. Parks and Rec can be similar to my report from the last meeting, but check out the parks program running this year, or this summer, excuse me, at Recreation.BerkleyMish.org, including youth and adult guitar lessons in the park, yoga in the park, karate in the park, and so much more. So, summer concert dates are also on the website, so be sure to check those out. And the next meeting for the Advisory Board will be on Thursday, June 8th at 7:00 PM in the Community Center. So, and then the next Environmental Advisory Committee meeting is going to be next week, June 13th, at 6:30 on the second floor of public safety. And I, too, would like to echo my colleagues' thanks and congratulations for the public safety officers that were sworn in tonight and the incredible work that you all do each and every day. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Valani?
All right. No CEAC or TAC meeting updates, as there has not been a meeting since our last meeting. Let's see, from the Berkeley Area Chamber, "The Berkeley Bullhorn is being launched, which is a consumer-facing initiative which aims to amplify Berkeley businesses to all residents. It will feature sales, promotions, events at Chamber businesses. It will showcase new business openings and ribbon cuttings, business owner profiles, and upcoming community events. This will be launching at the Art Bash this weekend, so make sure you check it out." The next June Chamber Chat is on Friday, June 16th at 8:30 AM at NADA &amp; Co. No registration needed. You can just go ahead and show up. And the Berkeley Street Art Fest is on July 15th. This is the chalk one on Coolidge, not the 12-mile art one this weekend. And sponsorship registration is open at BerkeleyStreetArtFest.com. And I have two rounds of congrats echoing my colleagues as well to all of our new public safety officers. We are very grateful that when we run away from trouble, you run to it. And then, also, to all of our graduates. So, whether they are our little kindergarten friends, our fifth graders moving up to middle school, those eighth graders going on to high school, or the high schoolers going on to their next adventure, wishing you all the greatest success in your new endeavors.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Certainly, some good news. Berkeley, for the second year in a row, has received a gold prize for, from the Michigan Green Communities Initiative. The city has undertaken a number of green and environmentally friendly initiatives over the years. Not only is the city's an organization, but also through the fantastic efforts of the Environmental Advisory Committee as well. It is a fantastic partnership that has really started to get a lot of great accolades. Again, second year in a row that we've been recognized in this front, and so, very, very proud of that, and more to come in many years in the future as well, including probably one of our more visible projects right now, the lights at our Berry's baseball. Two and three are all going in LED conversion right now, which will also save the money, or save the city money in the future. It's good stuff happening. Next up, it's Summer Safety Month, as council adopted at a previous meeting. It's been extremely hot in the last couple of weeks. Not a lot of break in that coming. By hot, I mean that in Michigan sense, where it's like, you know, 75 degrees or more. But it's very important that we all stay very safe, especially as the little kids, as Councilmember Valani, little ones are going to be running around here in a couple of weeks. They're going to be out in the lot. They're going to be in camps. They're going to be in sports, any number of different ways where it's important to keep track of them and make sure that they are getting hydrated enough and taking the proper precautions against the summer heat. Last, but certainly not least, I want to say thank you to Mr. Kenny Ozanich. For those that don't know Kenny, you're really missing out because he's a fantastic individual. He has been with our Department of Public Works for a very long time, 20-plus years. I think it was more than 25 at this point. He's made the difficult decision to hang up his orange vest and, but Kenny, his family, his wife, his sons, his father, Kenny's Berkeley through and through, and cannot say enough good things about him, but we'll have to try between now and June 16th, which will be his last day with the city. So, thank you for everything, Kenny. Look forward to all that you'll continue to accomplish because you're still a pretty young guy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Christ?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report to see.
Well, according to the Property Club, Berkeley is the second safest city in Michigan. Grozeal was number one, but it's an island, so if you want to commit crimes, you have to take a bridge. And I grew up downriver, so they, there used to be a free bridge and a toll bridge. So, I don't know. The last I heard, the free bridge was either under construction, they were redoing it, so I don't know. I'm fine with being number two after an island. Berkeley Dad's Club Baseball, was this past Saturday, I had the pleasure of experiencing and offering remarks at Moms and Dads Club Baseball Opening Day festivities and parade. It was great being outside on such a beautiful day and seeing so many families excited about sports. Congratulations to Berkeley Dad's Club on your 75th anniversary in our community. And I want to give a shout-out to District Champs, the Bears Varsity Baseball Team coached by Matt Rollick. Good job, guys. And at this time, I'd like to take a moment to remember former Mayor Jerry Durst. Mayor Durst was followed in death Sunday, May 21st, just hours later, by his wife of more than 70 years, Wanda. Mayor Durst served our city from 1991 to 95 and co-owned Durst Lumber and Ace Hardware. We mourn this great loss, remember Mayor Durst for everything he did for our community, and extend our deepest condolences to the entire Durst family. I had the opportunity to have a wonderful conversation with Mayor and Mrs. Durst during my last campaign. I was out knocking doors, and their house was the next one, and I was greeted warmly and had a memorable conversation. They were both just so adorable. They let me into their home. Have a seat. Do you want water? Do you need a bathroom? Yes to all of the above. And we discussed all things Berkeley, as well as campaigning, but what struck me the most was their love and focus on family. There were countless pictures of their children and grandchildren all over. I mean, I didn't leave the living room, but the presence of family and the love was palpable. And I had the privilege of hearing about all their grandkids, and they were very proud of their family. So, Jerry and Wanda, you were truly blessed, and thank you for your service to our community. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Motion made by Councilmember Valani?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Patterson. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.